One point seven here. And we'll first add a couple of agents. So all members will have.
Right, so this is.
Carol and Jazus. Who?
Dorothy's missing.
Dorothy's here, she's on Zoom.
Morgan, she will.
Can you talk to Dorothy?
Except the one that's out.
It's okay. The reasonable associates serving today, Dean is making Dorothy's place.
Dean, uh, you don't like him, right?
Why can't you all better? Mr. Nice House. Okay, approval of business from previous meetings. Second. All in favor say aye. Approval meeting from the week, from the workshop.
Be three minutes for the workshop on May fifteen twenty one three. I'll say. Who's going off? I didn't think I'll say.
Okay, remove the second, approve the minutes from workshop. All in favor say aye.
I understand, I look there actually like you.
Any matters to each other? Have none. All business, now down to the leader. Your son said, mission really on interrival. Tell the whole short term.
So do I understand.
It was approved.
Say it's woven in that under the bar.
Okay, so been here in Helbo with short term rental permit located in zone one was approved.
Next one.
Okay.
Special use permit.
Oak disposal.
Yes. That wasn't.
So special use permit for um oak disposal was approved.
Okay.
And.
Affordable housing.
Line especially use permit for affordable housing was approved.
Well, storage unit, commercial sites.
Um, was approved.
Okay, then seven to thirty five waiver.
Was approved.
All right. Was the. Yes, Bill.
Uh, I'm sorry. We're a little bit less be, who's here at that? So I need to abstain.
Okay.
So my apologies for it.
All right, second. Hi. Yes. All in favor see the vote, say aye.
I will.
Bill abstained.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh. Now we're on to uh zoning recommendations. Uh, and what we're gonna do next. I always figured we wouldn't even try to do anything until at least August.
Yeah.
Okay, when you say not do anything, from what I understand, the next steps would be another missionaries workshop to go over everything that we've approved because we were done.
Yes.
As far as I'm concerned, we're done. So. I would recommend to the commissioners to set up another.
Workshop.
Workshop in August. Later August, hopefully.
Yes.
That'll go via. So can you? I don't know, how does that relate to them?
Uh.
Dorothy.
Yeah.
Through design.
So. Yeah, so then we would just um get a hold of um whoever's the assistant for the commissioners and put it on the agenda. Okay, late August, okay. It'd be a commissioners workshop.
We can schedule that.
We have show. Yeah, we're final.
And by then I'll have the last few changes, which is not a lot, updated in our markup copy. So I'll make sure they have that well before Dorothy.
Yeah, that was. Well, if it wasn't, we didn't shoot that on workshop. There's like some.
No, we decided that all use of. For a bit. And that is in the minutes. So I think we were done. Start to be adjuror. Lots of money. That allows.
But then we will need to have a meeting after their workshop to pass our suggestions for the zoning resolution.
No, that'd be during the workshop. Then we, then they have to have a public meeting.
Go ahead, after we send it to.
Right, that, that's why, that's what I said, and I'll hope that well ahead of time for, for everybody to include the latest recommendations, there's not a lot to add.
And, and then don't they make recommendations back to us?
Well, that will be the purpose for commissioners working.
Right, so actually, no decisions can be made during the workshop. They have to have an actual hearing with the public to propose the changes.
Right, but we will need to have at a regular meeting, we will need to pass our change, our changes as a planning commission to send to them to recommend to the commissioners.
Okay.
That they make these changes in the resolution.
So can we add that to August's agenda for that meeting?
Not the.
Not the workshop, then there's the workshop.
Oh.
So do you.
So September's.
Right.
Right.
Wow, okay. Got all that? So September planning commission meeting, you do the recommendations. And then they hold a hearing.
And they hold a hearing.
Right.
The resolution says commissioners over hearing, not us.
I hear you.
Which is we have been holding hearings.
What we should.
Yeah, the resolution says that.
Resolution says commissioners.
Yeah. Did we ever hear the season on penalties, so Ford was gonna be checking into it, is that?
It doesn't go into the resolution, it just says current penalties in the office.
Actually, so it becomes like an appendix.
Cause she was checking with the attorney and checking on standard things.
We had heard that.
Yeah, but uh, okay.
Do you? So, yes. Can you give something to us, like measure or remove, when did you say? Or so that we know.
It'll be.
Okay, that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
I will get that to you well in advance of the workshops so that you have time to peruse it, but all right, no. Okay, okay. So yes, I will get marked up by early August.
Okay, any other comments on that section? Atlanta, any comments?
No.
Can I read the bigger screen? Want you to order.
I didn't want to do.
You know, it's difficult.
We're doing right.
Okay. And so new business. Uh. The presentation for the Baker's special use permit located in zone four lot six, town location. AKA nine twenty five April. Western Colorado, build and operate a short term auto boarding facility on their property. And you have Baker's gift. There are a few step forward, we even got two chairs. And let me just. Linda abandoned her chair.
Do we need a microphone for them? Assistant?
Yeah, it's lying. They allow you to know my vocalized speakers.
Okay.
Okay, it's you for your break, tell us what you wanna do.
Um, we just wanna open up a short term dog boarding uh business out of an existing building that we have starting with around twelve kennels um and just to see proof the business, see how it goes and then if it goes well and it grows, then um look into moving it in town. And that's it.
To moving in.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, uh. Letters.
Did everybody read the letters that I put on?
Yes. Oh, we could. You mind reading them for the.
I can. Okay. I'm responding to the S U P request submitted by Jared and Aaron Baker to build and and operate a short term dog boarding facility on their property. Their property is less than one mile from my home. I want to go on the record expressing that I am opposed to this request for the following reasons. Noise nuisance from barking dogs. Sound carries here in the valley and even with mitigation, when the dogs are outside, barking noise will carry throughout the neighborhood. This is very disruptive. Negative impact to property values. Home buyers are not as likely to purchase homes where there is a commercial dog boarding facility in the neighborhood. And it will negatively impact the property values and sell of homes in the surrounding neighborhoods. Zoning conflict. A dog boarding facility should be directed to industrial, commercial areas where there will not be an impact to neighbors. This is a royal area where many people choose to buy property due to the need for a lifestyle with limited disruption, limited commercial businesses and limited strangers traveling the back roads. Increased traffic and loss of privacy. There is already enough traffic on two forty one without adding more commercial activity to the area. I moved here to have peace, quiet and privacy. Adding commercial businesses in the neighborhood is counterproductive to this risk to pets, property and livestock. Many of us who live in this area have moved here to fulfill our love of farming or caring for livestock. I plan to get horses, chickens, et cetera. We also have cattle grazing the V L M in our neighborhood. Boarding multiple dogs for commercial use poses the risk of escape. If they escape and yet lose the dogs who the neighborhood would not be familiar with, could disrupt harm or start a wild life, pets and livestock that already reside here. I very much appreciate you reviewing these concerns and for your consideration regarding this matter. Thank you for your time, Taylor J McVinnie.
Just no Jason.
Um. No. He is not even on the map. So I think that he just found that line another neighbor. He says he's within one mile.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's greater than a three.
Yeah.
Okay. Dear Dorothy and Delana, we are responding to the S U P request submitted by our neighbor Jared and Aaron Baker. Wishing to build and operate a short term dog boarding facility on their property. We want to go on the record expressing an adamant no to this request for the following reasons. Noise nuisance from barking dogs. Noise does carry throughout the neighborhood and this is not acceptable for residential areas. Case in point, a neighbor on county road two forty one within one point five miles from our home allows a barking dog and the sound definitely carries to where we hear it, disrupting peace and quiet. Even with proposed mitigation to the soundproof, the facility studies have shown dogs bark in dog kennels and other holding areas are built to make noise worse by amplifying sound and increasing agony. Tension and stress felt from the incredible constant barking noise easily exceeds a hundred D B. Ocean requires hearing protection at eighty five. A single dog barking can reach eighty to ninety decibels. There are dogs that can reach over a hundred. When you have a group of dogs such as those in a kennel or daycare center, the typical noise level can reach an alarming of a hundred and fifteen decibels. Loss of privacy due to increased and frequent trapping and exposed to our neighborhood on Haven Road. Road wear and tear, Haven Road is a private neighborhood road, it is not a county road and is not maintained by the county. It is maintained by the neighbors in this subdivision. The extra wear and tear on our roads by frequent and increased commercial traffic is not acceptable. Lower property values, having a commercial dog boarding facility in the neighborhood will jeopardize the residential property value of our home and other homes in the neighborhood, this is not acceptable. As noted in studies, barking that is contagious and loud enough to be disruptive will reduce property values for anyone nearby. Residential and ag zoning. We did not move to a royal county residential ag property to be a commercial zone. If that were the case, we would have purchased a home that with that type of zoning, our subdivision needs to remain ag. Disrupting the quality of living in our subdivision with a dog boarding business is not acceptable. Location of a new dog boarding facility should be guided to non-residential areas. Note, other neighbors already operated commercial businesses from our subdivision in nearby areas did not go through a special S U P process to our knowledge. And we are not officially notified by the county intentions to build or operate a business on the residential ag property. Unfortunately, we now have to deal with increased traffic due to these intentions, Eric and Don's saying.
Do we know that, that is, they said that we were sure.
I don't know what you're talking about.
And let's.
Say again.
Come on, man.
Well, I know I wrote a lot.
Oh. Oh, you said. Well, it's something that we can't discuss here, that's through the S U Ps, I said there was other S U P that, but they're not businesses. Uh, that's occurred, we knew that they were. That's what I was. But that's not to discuss like.
No, that's not.
Special use permit request lot six animal park. Thank you very much for your correspondence. Unfortunately, we cannot attend the meeting. This makes the elevation of the proposal very difficult as there are many questions, none of which are answered in the quest for variance. The first question is, how many dogs? A half a dozen is one thing, however, however, fifty is an entirely different situation. Why not cats also? If they wish to make a going business of this, I would think they would for all pets. And while it increases business, it also increases traffic. All of which brings up the question, if they plan to make a valuable business of this, how much to they anticipate growing? Being the only boarding kennel in the valley, it could become a fair sized business. What is their plan? How many people do they intend to employ? What hours should they tend to open? And my final question is, if they want to minimize the impact of on the neighbors, why do they not put the kennel at the back of their forty three acre property boarding the V L M instead of right on the road? We think the boarding kennel is a great idea and we support small business. We do, however, have our reservations about allowing businesses in a residential area. Zoning, zoning is inactive for a reason. An office is one thing, but retail commercial traffic creates a different situation. One thing leads to another and we would not welcome the development of a strip mall. We are also a small business and while we have no foot traffic, we located our lab in a commercial zone rather than running it out of our house. In consideration of all the questions above, we do not support the application as it stands. Thank you for your opportunity to address the board and express our thoughts, Andrew J Manning. Dear Delaney, I am writing this letter in response to your request for a special use permit for the property at lot six animal park for a short term boarding, boarding and dog kennel business. As a property owner in close proximity of the proposed kennel, we are concerned that the increased noise and traffic would not be appropriate in a residential neighborhood. Would request that you check the request for the S U P as a matter of keeping residential neighborhoods residential. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, Jody Yates Simon.
What was the last name again?
Simon.
Simon.
Okay, I don't see that one.
I don't really.
This is a response to the S U P request by the Bakers nine twenty five Haven Road with the intention of operating a dog boarding facility on their property. They are close neighbors east of our residence. I love dogs and have two of my own. I absolutely respect and support ambitious people who start small businesses. I too am a small business owner, as is my husband. However, our businesses do not impede on our neighborhood's privacy or peace. It is important to me to be a respectful, considerate neighbor as I would appreciate this in return. I have three concerns regarding this potential operation in our neighborhood. Noise is my biggest concern. Our main reason for moving to Westwood was for the peace and quiet. It may be possible to mitigate barking when dogs are indoors, but when they are outdoors, which I would assume whenever, when they're regularly for bathroom breaks, exercise and socialization. It is obvious that the dogs would be heard across the neighborhood. I can already hear my neighbor's dogs bark an occasion and their homes are further away than the Bakers. Because most West Cliff residents don't have A C in our homes, we keep our windows open all day and sometimes all night in summer. So there is no escaping the barking of dogs or any other loud outside, outside noise for that matter. I also fear that holidays would be especially noisy for neighbors considering that many people leave town and kennel their dogs these days and weekends. There is absolutely no way to soundproof the outdoors. It is just not possible. I firmly do not believe any neighborhood in an appropriate location for this kind of business. Property value will no doubt decline. I have asked four different realtors their opinions on this matter. A home would be more difficult to sell if located by a dog kennel due to the noise, no question. I can get this in writing immediately. If I were house hunting, I would never choose a home close to a commercial business of any kind, especially one that emits noise. We have moved multiple times and every time we become serious about making an offer, we need to spend a day and sometimes a night like we did in West Cliff to make sure the neighborhood was reasonably quiet. I do not live directly off Haven Road, however, I love and respect my fellow neighbors in June. Their peace and privacy would be jeopardized with the increase of track. I respectfully ask that you consider our right to a peaceful neighborhood and deny their S U P. Joe, Jen and Joe Black.
I'm sorry, last name again?
Black. Dear Delana and C C Planning and zoning, I received notification via certified mail concerning the application of Baker's short term dog warning facility at nine twenty five Haven Road. As an adjuror and property owner, I feel it is necessary to put a letter out on support of their new venture, including the approval of their S U P. I visited with the Jarrett's onsite and he relayed their future plans and showed me the area he will be using for kennels and the run. My concern of increased barking noise was well handled by him and is, and he assured me steps would be taken to minimize this. The Bakers have been good neighbors and I see no reason to stand in their way in pursuit of this venture, I wish them well, gentle. Which is all.
Okay, uh, public comment.
So. We, we have spent private time trying to research number one. Um, what are the input output? Um, what are the input output? Positives, negatives? And most of us all moved to Westwood. To get away from the noise, to get away. From a commercial business, to get away from all the things that are going on. That's why I love. Um, we have had some not good experiences with the Bakers that you're not going to hear from anybody else. Like when he launches. Tanzania, is that what it is? Tanzania, when you were blown, it shook our windows. So bad, I had to call the sheriff's office because we didn't know what was. And at that time, General Bob Hollingsworth, who was on the force, I called him first. And he cannot identify it. On top of that. Uh, we hear barking dogs all the time. You've never said a word. It's okay. People have dogs, people have horses, people have cattle. That's all part of it. The second thing that's a big concern. We have six grandkids. They don't come up very often. But one of the noise factors is constant. Noise from a motor cross. Racing. They have their own track on the property. It's right next to us. We've never complained once. And that constant noise. It's constant. Whenever they're practicing and I encourage kids to get involved in sports and that kind of stuff, but we've never complained. In the time that they visit. In fact, the first time I met Jared. Uh, and he was really hung up down the road. I asked him if he could slow down. Wasn't a good response. So we have still tried to be good neighbors. But if you take the five major things. Noise nuisance, lots of privacy. Wear and tear on that road. And I've asked commissioners five years straight if they would help on that road. They don't. It is not in the budget. Uh, the residential ag zoning and the quality of living that is gonna change dramatically. Uh, there is no short term or whatever. Once you open the door to any ag. Property, then you change by adding commercial operations. Everything changes. Whether GPS deliveries or. Uh. You know. Clients coming in and being, being, being. And I have at this point. Uh. Really. Can't understand why this is even an issue because. The the fifth thing is, my understanding is, and this is from one of the former professors. Um. This has been tried before. Uh, to have a dog kennel. I don't know. Where it was, but they, it was shot down every time in years past. I went on the legal part for Colorado and a website called Justine. About the hundreds of cases where people practice. Everywhere. It isn't just in small rural communities. Uh. The reports and the things that I have read. Uh, about. The dog kennel back here by homes. Is multiple losses. Whether it's good for the community, it's a whole different issue. It's not zoned for commercial use. And therefore, we just can't understand why it's even an option. Uh, at this point, because people have moved here. To lose their patience by people that have moved here to smell high feces and all the other stuff. People have moved here. To have their property values lowered. And that's a big, we're right next door. And, um. Anybody that's ever been in real estate, and I've been around business since forty something years. Uh, it's not going to be a good outcome. Thanks for your time. Senator Republicans. Uh, planning permission.
Well, what have you been doing for the water?
For water? So we live on forty-five acres and um, the barn at the well, it's a big metal building. That we're planning on building the kennels in. It does have water.
Hmm.
The water supply comes from?
From our well.
Okay. Uh, I think that might be the problem.
Something we need to check.
We, yeah, we need to check to see if you can use that water because there's probably later additional. Well.
To fill up dog dishes or?
Well. So where she wants to stay is going to class of that. You know, a commercial well. Or still a residential well. Morning boarding facility does require commercial water, so. That's a bad ability to ask and I've already said it before. Yeah. It's one more. Anything else? There.
It says here that you've been operating a successful boarding facility since two thousand eight.
Yes.
Another plan here.
Yes, so me and my mother own um, a country canine resort in Sydney, sit in Pablo. And that's where.
Yeah.
A country canine resort in Sydney, sit. Dog training in Pablo, Colorado. Um, so I've been doing that for fifteen years. Um, we actually started um. Out of her home fifteen years ago and um. I'm basically just looking to have a way to make a living up here. Um, we're kind of in a position down in Pablo currently where um, our property is getting taken by intimate domain. And um. We either have to rebuild down there, which is extremely expensive right now. And also um, just dealing with the state and the city. Or I, you know, I've been commuting. We've lived here for eight years and I've been commuting back and forth every day for five days a week for eight years. And so I'm looking to um, fill a need that I think the community needs, um, but also. You know, start in a way that isn't a huge expense. Right off the bat. To see if I can make it work up here since it is quite a bit smaller.
Someone had stated when you first started that uh, thank you, Ben.
Yeah.
That you would move it to town. Did I hear that?
Yeah, so I I don't want to keep it, you know, keep it at my home forever either. It's definitely not, you know. What I would want to do long term. If it were um. Sustainable and growing, I would look to move it. Into town where I can have more. Commercial space, yeah, and and be able to offer more services.
Good. Uh. Where is the? Your mother's sold up in Devil and Mountain?
Twenty-four twenty-four North Freeway Road.
So it's just south of the Pablo Mall next to Wayne's Towing, just right off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that was an old motel.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we converted it.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Yeah.
State's gonna take it from you.
Yep. We sure are.
You're ready?
No, I don't know. Yeah, I had. Um, Toby, I don't. This is our. They don't move to a dog park near. So. How do you have it going up? I don't know if you can allow embarrassing. Oh, there was a. Anyone out there? You want to add that? That's, that's your home with rocks and shit.
Oh.
Yeah. I don't think that they board.
No. No, they don't. They're pretty.
So pretty.
No.
We have, we have a lot of people that come from West Cliff to us in Pablo. So. I know there will be some business here.
And and I mean, we we really want to be good neighbors to our neighbors, um. Since we've moved into our property, I would say a large amount of the maintenance that happens on our road. I've done personally, um, can't say everybody's always there to see what I do, but I have a skid steer. And I take it down to Lake Road and clean up the tracks. And I take it all the way out towards Alliance property. Uh, when we moved in, it was just a two-track. There was mud holes twenty feet long that. Um, you really just didn't want to get through. My wife uses that route, you know, because that's our main route to head to Pablo. And so. I've done a a lot of maintenance on that myself. And I mean, we've talked about it a lot. If we were allowed this special use permit, that um. Just to be good neighbors. We we would be happy to just take care of maintaining the road for our neighbors upon ourselves. Um, one of the neighbors, the mullets have a road grader that they hire once every couple of years that comes in and. Does a little bit, but I mean, there's definitely, everybody wants our road to be nicer than it is right now. And you know, that's something that we were. Have talked about ourselves just doing for the neighborhood. And you know, as far as. Tanzanite going off, um, there's neighbors will cross Lake Road that they set it off there, you know, during Fourth of July, there was lots of things happening everywhere. Um, we do have a thirteen-year-old that enjoys riding his dirt bike sometimes and we live on forty-five acres adjoining to B L M. Um, we really don't have visual. Vision of any neighbors on our road from live and you know, he goes and rides his dirt bike maybe. Two times a week for a half hour time. I mean, it's not like we're just. You know, there's more people that ride on the B L M round up with land that. Um, are just passive eyes than we do personally.
So two things, just in that vein, right, parallel rules. So the rules you're talking about is is probably just subdivision of accounting team for the second.
Um, from what I've talked to um, upstairs. And the way he told me is it's a county, it's a county. Um. Owned road, but it is not a county maintained road.
Gotcha. So you're.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just because of the letters, you know, noise obviously. I've got four colleagues, you know, they're quiet. They're gentle. They totally decided to be quiet. But, um. So noise, so it's, it's, so why don't you address? Cause all of them are against that. I don't, there's. Insulation to the building.
Yeah.
There's, and then, you know, in a word, like you can order more of a word calling kennel outside and I had one guy. Here, you can use some concrete floor. She did right underneath it.
Yeah.
She kind of helped the cows when she wasn't supposed to. So, I mean, so your outside facility, the hard floors and the. Just, just give us some of that, just kind of about making sure that they stay where they're, they stay in noise.
Yeah, so it would be concrete inside and out in the space that they're kennelled. Um, and then of course it would be insulated. We would have, you know, hours where, you know, you're closed in, you're closed in. So you know, currently at our place in Pablo, we do seven to six. Um, and Monday through Friday, uh, nine to four Saturday, and then we do split hours on Sundays. Um, so you know, we have.
Explain that to me. Uh, so seven to six being that they can be outdoors, correct?
In and out, yeah, in and out, yeah. I mean, because in in Pablo, we have um. Uh, uh, ninety kennels. We have well over two. Yeah, they're indoor-outdoor. Yeah, we have. Play yards up here. I I don't know that I would be looking to um, do socialization and play groups. Um, so much is just, you know, boarding, you know, exercise within their own family type situation in a fenced-in area. So they're not just running around the property. It'd definitely be um. Fenced in and I've definitely learned over the years. About dogs that can climb, dogs that can dig, dogs that can chew, um, all those things and ways to combat combat that. Um, also playing music helps, putting up fencing, um, solid wall fencing helps, trees. Um, things like that also help with noise.
And and to go further on that, um, so the metal building we have, it's it's quite large. But it was built by the previous owners of the property to park their semi trucks inside of. Um, so really the plan that we've been thinking about is actually building a shell inside of that building because. With as much space to heat and cool, all that um, would be a lot. So you know, a a twenty-foot wide by sixty-foot long. Um, interior shell that would be fully insulated on the inside.
Hmm.
And to protect the neighbors a little bit further from the noise. On the west side of what would be the exterior yard, we were going to use solid wall fencing there. Um, just so when they are out in the play yard, if they're barking, being around bushes, hopefully that is at a distance, you know, and that's. Kind of directly towards where the home birds live and. This one since.
It would also be on um, the south end of the building not facing the road. Yeah.
Bill. Uh. And I'm just thinking out loud. Would you, I don't know whether this worked for anybody. But would you consider? It approved for a certain amount of burden. At which time you either figured it out, it's going to work. Or you shut it down. But it, uh, for a certain time interval. You could operate. And then. When that time's up. You move to town or you throw a business. With that, I don't know whether that is a viable solution to the problem or not.
I don't think it would be a ground special use permit.
Yeah. That's why, yeah. Nobody goes into business to go out of it. Like, just normal insurance kit. What's yours?
Hmm.
Yeah, to consider it would uh, say to help.
Sure.
And we'd be more than happy to have you all out to see it.
I don't know. Um, why anyone? That's doing that. Well, you are okay with this. I knew you were doing it. It's not. It's similar, I wanted to give information. In our heads before we ever went and looked at students, just because you never go paper.
Right.
So we know where we're looking. Basically, what we're going to look for. Yeah.
Ba- basically, every letter that was read had to do with noise.
Hmm.
New Zealand's um, a commercial area, residential area.
Hmm.
That's every letter stated, those two options. And I know you're talking about having panic, the kind of noise, like building a bigger building.
Hmm.
No, I guess.
Well, uh, a smaller building inside of a bigger building. Yeah.
It's just that the dogs don't get any sunlight. Yes.
Well, I'm, it would be indoor/outdoor. So typically how we do it now is we'll, you know, let them out in the mornings to potty, bring them in, feed them. Depending on weather, you know, we keep them closed in, let them out to exercise, bring them back in, close them in and, you know, rotate like that. And then once, you know, it's closing time, everybody's closed in. For the night.
And so, so how to.
Hmm.
Say this was approved, six months goes down the road. You got barking dogs, you got neighbors now complaining. About everything that you're saying in the letter. How do we handle that? How would you handle? Like.
Well, I would try to be as conscious as possible to. Combat those from, to not let it happen in the first place. I mean, it's kind of like the things we just said as far as the noise goes, um. You know, I'm not expecting, obviously there will be some more traffic for people dropping them off and picking them up. But that, you know, to start, I don't see that being. A a ton and not doing, um. You know, doggy daycare or anything like that to start, so.
Is there anywhere else on the top page to? Put this whole place to get it away from neighbors?
At that point, I would just, you know, I I don't know that it would be. Financially advantageous to build a whole nother place on the property.
And and really anywhere on our property, is it going to be? Any closer or further away? I mean.
Noise wise, open.
To see on. Site visit because we really don't have any. Hmm, neighbors that live. Almost within sight of our house.
Hmm.
That's, I think, those are the two things. The thing that you need to schedule a site tour. And then it needs to be looked into here to understand that dog dishes are not very good, diet for water. But more of the commercial aspect and the galling law comes in on water use.
But more of the commercial aspect and the galling law comes in on water use. And that means we dealt with it too.
If we had to bring in uh bring in water, then I I would do that because the usage is.
They're gonna have to wash down the kennels sometime, so.
They're good, I mean, they're more just. When we think about the manifest of a marijuana grow, we've got a lot of uses that that becomes commercial versus dogs. It's still winds up. So we just have to.
Mister Chair, I I just have a question for the planning admission. Do you really have no um? Uh, uh, do you really have no provision for? A review, like a one year review of an S U P stadium issued via S U P conditionally? You know, and say we're looking at it again in a year, is there?
That usually comes up with any conditions we we put on it.
So that could be a conditional, for example, sure, yeah.
Be on sensible conditions. If if too much of the doors don't either direction for it to be abused by either the individuals that are carrying the S U P. Or for for neighbors to just want to squash you, right? If there's not closing ends, this thing that are set still. Almost every S U P. Almost every S U P will come, conditions that are laid out to be bad, you know. So.
Does anybody have any more information on the topic of the water well? I mean, if someone is cutting hair out of their house or. I I mean, any business uses some sort of water.
Consult with the division engineers office in the Piaflo. They can answer all your questions.
I have, I have been.
We'll get the. Division engineers office is located on Aviando Street, about a block east of the library.
Yeah, can call down there and they can give her an answer. Yes.
Yeah, the the whole idea about property values. Really is a um bigger factor and. One of the neighbors, she wrote a letter, actually talked to realtors. I did not, I went to some of the legal stuff. And if in fact a property. He ran an S U P. If the door is open, the door is open. Uh, requires whatever, in fact, negatively, property, until they're certified by pictures. Our way is secure, using noise. And lower property, I just disposal. For all the realtors that I did not talk to, had nothing to do with. They all stated yes, nobody wants to buy a home or a nice thirty kind of big property. Uh, with a commercial enterprise that's gonna affect roads, value, uh values, noises, all that. So then you have nothing to deal about. That's what happens when people are forced to. You know, lose value on something that they have. That's not a good idea.
You said it was formally that your building was um a trouble.
It's just a ballpark.
Yeah.
Thank you, friends. Well, I reserve only a bill.
I mean, that that's the the goal of, as far as the property values, that's why I wouldn't want to keep it there, you know. Ten years or whatever, I I mean, a year or two to get it up and going, to get it profitable. I don't know that I could do it that fast in a year, but definitely the goal would be, I didn't wanna live, you know, where I have fifty dogs. I would want to live where I can, you know, I can invest in our property, get something, a business proof going. Because I have looked into purchasing places here in town. But without having a um established business. The bank isn't going to loan me money on a property that I'm gonna have a high overhead and no income to show. So as far as property values go, I am not looking to drop our own property value. I'm looking to invest in the business, get it up and going, move it to town.
And as far as the number of dogs you're looking at.
I'm I'm looking at at twelve kennels to start. Yes, to start. Yes. I I.
And that's really all we have room for on the exterior portion of the the building. The only way we would be able to add any more kennels is if they were open into the inside of the barn. Which we thought maybe we can use the rest of the space inside of the barn as winter. You know, when it's snowy outside and then the dogs are indoors all day.
I mean, I'd have, I'd have to have enough income in order to afford another place. So and again, I'm not looking to have fifty kennels, you know, all that in our in our property. I I'm just looking for a start.
In the discussions, we know problems and wait till we go see the property.
When would that be?
And you know, who will work it so. You know, it's suitable with you guys.
So we we've heard, we've listed, right? And then there's due diligence to be done, like this is a part of. Cutting isn't a problem. Other things to look at, and then at the next meeting, more than likely, the next scheduled planning commission. Your meeting, when this will be discussed and more of a lot. We can be, if there are more that's found, then it's be discussed and be dealing with it, but more than likely.
With all the letters that we have, you know, we're doing the agency property. And see how you're gonna address all these things. And well, we will type aside here so that, you know, it's satisfactory with you and us. And then only has to win the next meeting.
It's going to be the seventh, the first Monday of August is.
Maybe fourth, seventh of August. There's further comments on that.
Have you considered leasing space? In a place that's already either commercial or approved for commercial activity? Not on the lease.
Yes.
The hard thing with leasing is that the build out that has to be done. We're basically putting a lot of money into somebody else's property.
Then we won't get back.
Right, but if you were gonna keep the kennel there anyway. Whenever you build up, it's.
To our property now.
Concrete, the finished space, and we see all that as um.
Value.
Value that's that will be added to our property. And I mean, I have looked into, I mean, we've been watching for real estate in town. Um, we have talks to business owners, we were working with the bank. Months ago, in order to buy a place up here, and in the end, the bank was reluctant because we just could not prove our business fair. Um, just it it's a small community and trying to get the revenue stream, it it we kind of have just have to prove it unless. Where we're at.
Basically, where they told me to start.
Question, you're not trying to peer me your life. Uh, or you in any way should form with your brother on her business plan LLC or something up there? Are you part of that partnership?
I do own a percentage of the business, but I'm not a a member of her LLC.
Bank was that is two years of experience in the business that you're trying to get along, so that's what they're like.
Right, then they, so they basically told me because it would be a different business. It wouldn't be at the same business name that that didn't count.
Or he stopped there's option.
Uh, yes, yeah, and I I definitely, you know. Discussed it with.
Buy a place elsewhere is one good.
Right, and that's what I, where we had started months ago, before we were even considering it on our property. But that's what they told me is even though with all of my experience in the business, because it is not the same. Business name and it's not in the same location, it didn't count.
I think they were really looking about the the size of the community.
Yeah.
Were you talking to a local bank or?
Have you talked to a local bank about this?
Not up here, no.
Definitely question how, I was just trying. Some options, what I was trying.
Okay, if that's.
Is this the type of a facility that any of you in your residential places would want next doors to you? Please consider that, because that's what's happening to us.
Are you just? I was just wondering if there's any vacant buildings. Then they all lay. The worst loss you create.
Doors open.
Thank you.
Thank.
I did bring some certifications. A CPR first aid certified, I'm a therapy dog certified um evaluator. I am certified trainer through Sydney City Dog Training, just to show that I'm, you know, I have experience and I I do know what I'm doing, so.
Just just to dotize cross keys, they'll tell them where this is gonna go, right? That would be bad and have copies of it with their. Just.
Well, neither now we've been.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm having trouble hearing, can you guys hear me? Are you ready for the June report? Okay, sorry, I'm just have having connection issues, I think, so if I cut out, you'll know that's what's going on. Um, for the month of June, we had ten septic inspections, seven special conferences. Seven compliance inspections. We did four violation reviews and issued two contractor test. One of which did not finish and complete his test. Our septic permits were down eleven from last month. Same thing with the dwelling permits, they were down fifteen from last month. Accessory buildings or non dwellings were down ten. And so overall, for the month of June, um compared to last year, we were down twenty five permits. It was actually a slow month in June, we did not anticipate that. I don't know if that's gonna be a trend, if it's um building is gonna continue to decline. Be possibly because of the economy, I guess we'll just have to wait and see. Overall, for the year, last year compared to twenty twenty three, we're still up for septic permits. We're even at sixty two dwelling permits. Our non dwelling permits were up seven. And overall, just total permits um were up seven as well. If we look at our financials, we're looking fairly well. Let's see, last month actually was low, we were compared to last, the month before May was at ninety six thousand. Where we all ended the month of June at just right at a little, almost seven, almost sixty one thousand. If you look at the total revenue for last year compared to this year. Um, for permit zoning permits were sitting at a hundred and ninety eight thousand. Where last year we were at a hundred and forty one thousand, almost a hundred and forty two. For septic permit fees were at twenty two thousand, last year we were at fifteen five. Use tax, um, we're at a hundred and fifty thousand, six ninety two and forty cents. Last year, we were at sixty eight thousand and or sixty eight dollars and six cents. Um, other income, which is the, I, what falls into that is the cost of S U Ps and things like that. For um vacation of lot lines, everything falls into that category. We are down a little bit from last year, last year we were at seventy one. Seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy five, and this year we're at fifteen thousand, six ninety two. Our total income this year so far compared to last year. Last year, we were at a hundred and seventy five thousand, three forty six ninety, and this year we're at seventy eight. I'm sorry, sorry, three hundred and eighty six thousand, six twenty two and fifty cents. So we're still, we're um still plugging along, doing well. I'm hoping that we don't, I mean, I guess if we continue to see the decline, we don't have any control over that. We'll just have to kind of wait and see how the cards fall. Uh, we have two that I know of, two active S T Rs that are not permitted. One that was actually closed, voted to um be revoked. That I was just informed is still operating, so I will be addressing that issue when I get back. We have the sawmill um that has been an issue. He has finished his final plumbing and electrical and we did schedule a close out before I left. And um they were not home and we went out there to do that. So where that is lot is going to end, I don't know, but I will keep everybody updated. We did not issue any um cease and desist orders, but I do have two issues that I'm aware of right now. That we will, I'll be addressing on um Tuesday with people dumping waste on the ground. So that's a con- just continuously seem to have little issues in that area, come and go. Our biggest issue in the month of June was that we had one contractor and a septic contractor that installed two septic tanks. Without getting permitted, without pulling the permit for those. He did actually install those two systems and we're in the process of working with him. One of them has been dug up partially and I did inspect that. There were some changes made to that system that needed to be made to make sure that it was a sustainable system. Um, the other one I will most likely be looking at when I return on Tuesday. Anyone have any question? Anyone have any question?
Yeah, for the, on the, uh. The contractor doing two separate tanks, which is the legal, they'll get out. Is he gonna get fined or something gonna happen in here?
Um, I cannot answer that at this point, um. I think that's probably something we need to look at and maybe add to the resolutions since we're making changes on how. We can specifically address those issues. There is some verbiage in the Custer County onsite waste management or waste system, um. Booklet, but it. To me, it needs to be a little bit clearer. And if we add it to the resolution, I think that would be our recommendation to the. To the commissioners, or it could be just further defined in the outs handbook. And that would be the board of health that we would address that with.
You're, you're talking with your attorney to some penalties or fines, which would stop that immediately.
Yes, sir, I have not received a word back from him as of yet, but I will follow up with him on Tuesday.
Gotta stop it.
Any other questions?
Yes, and your team, the, what was the term, the dollar, what they use tax? This year versus last year.
Or he's asking for the use tax for this year compared to last year?
Yeah, the use tax last year was at sixty-eight dollars and six cents. So far this year, we're at a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty cents.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Or if you'd like a percentage of increase on that.
I don't have my calculator in front of me. Did I lose you guys?
For. I have. No.
That's the middle of the, oh. Okay. If there's no current business, I will be adjourned.
Second. All the favors, I was saying, I.
Alright.